So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Karen, can you go ahead and call the role, please?
Yes, President Furman.
Present.
Vice President Curry.
Here.
Oh, excuse me, I have to sneeze.
Bless you.
Thank you. Alder Bennett.
Present and saying bless you.
Thank you. Alder Conklin.
Present.
Alder Figurale Call.
Here.
Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Abbas.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you, Karen. Joe, can you give us the tech info, please?
Under virtual meeting, if you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or on the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. We have no members of the public registered to speak tonight, so that's all I have. President Furman.
Thank you, Joe. I wasn't going to do this, but do want to just take a moment to acknowledge the horrific news out of Texas. For those of you may have heard, 14 students and a teacher died in a shooting at an elementary school. It's on my mind and just wanted to just take a brief moment before we jump into the agenda and just have a moment of silence. Okay, well, go ahead and jump into our agenda. The first item on our agenda is approval of minutes of the 419 meeting and the 517 2022 meeting. We can probably either take them as one motion or take them as two. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved. Is that sufficient? Sorry.
No, that works. Can I get a second? Alder Conklin, thank you for the second. And any questions, comments, concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move on to our first item on our agenda, which is public comment. There is nobody signed up for our generic public comment item. So we'll move on to the next item, which is disclosures and recusals. Karen, go ahead.
Sorry, just a quick vote on the minutes.
Sorry, unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, we'll move on to disclosures and recusals. I didn't see any, so we will go to new business. The first item for new business is reviewing the proposed CCEC dates, Legisstar item 71707. I sent out an email to everybody a little bit ago, asking to fill out a doodle to try to see if we can move our CCEC meeting from before the council meeting to give us a little bit more room and not start our council meeting day with an intense CCEC before each meeting. I have come up with a list of dates. Appreciate people that have pointed out some conflicts, but so far I am not hearing enough conflicts that will set it up such that we will have quorum issues. Really tried with care to not to work within the fact that there are people that are going to have meetings on some of those days that were suggested. But I'm hopeful that we can get as much of CCEC as well as much of the council, to be quite frank, at these meetings at the proposed date. The proposed start time would be 5:30. I can pull up the dates if anybody wants to see it, if anybody wants to point out some conflicts that they may not have pointed out yet. That may affect quorum. We can certainly talk about that, but I think this hopefully will help put us, as I said, in a position to really have a little bit more room for these meetings and more room for people to be able to come here and participate in the discussions we'll be having. So any thoughts, questions, comments, suggestions on the dates that have been suggested? Excellent. Not seeing any. So I appreciate that. Next, next item then would be reviewing CCEC items. I wanted to just call to people, to everybody's attention, the attachment, which I can share very quickly and give people a little bit of a preview of what we're going to be doing as a group going forward, is really trying to manage our agenda together. So one of the things that you will know from our agenda today is there are a lot of things that were referred to our meeting today. And so if we look at what was listed on this sheet for today, we've got a lot of things that we, I don't expect us to be getting done today. Well, we'll talk a little bit about possibly referring some of that to after the Alder interview tomorrow or.
President Furman?
Yep.
Sorry, can you zoom at all?
I absolutely can. Thank you for asking. There we go. Is that a little bit better? Perfect.
Absolutely.
So, so the idea is, you know, and the goal is for us to be working on these lists together. Right now, we do have things that have been referred to us, and so we're doing that, and we'll be doing that today. But going forward, I do expect us to spend some time at these meetings, trying to be intentional about what our agenda looks like together, recognizing that there are a lot of things that I think we all want to talk about this year. We're not going to get them all done in a meeting, but at least we can get a little bit of a blueprint on understanding that we'll be talking about. You know, this, for example, is proposing maybe that we talk about some of the 2023 onboarding training stuff in 615. Everything you see here, with the exception of today's meeting, is tentative. But, you know, I just, as I said, I want to give people a preview to know that as a group, we will work on this together and make sure that we have a pretty good roadmap, so we understand you know, what to expect at the meetings, have a chance for staff to prepare for that, et cetera. So, you know, again, the idea here is just a heads up. So if there's no other, is there any questions about that? And as I said, we'll, we'll definitely jump into this more together as a group. All right. Not seeing any. We'll move on to the first item that was referred to this meeting today, which is 71355, amending the title of section 33.13, amending section 33.131 and repealing section 33.132 related to the Common Council Executive Committee. Alder Foster, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, I would be happy to. Thank you. And I would recommend we really just take up items four and five together since they really are a kind of a bundled pair.
And any objections by the body of taking both those items up together? Okay, not seeing any. Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Thank you. So this is essentially an updated version from the item that I had prepared before CCEC previously to update the process for hiring the chief of staff. I think at the last time that one was discussed, I suggested that there were some other updates that I thought would be useful in that ordinance and had also felt that the civilian oversight board and office of the independent monitor could be a good model in terms of the, just the way that the ordinance was structured and written. And so our chief of staff helped bring in some of the content that I had worked on previously, put it into a new organization, which primarily splits the ordinance for CCEC and leaves that where the ordinance is today in chapter 33, which is where all of our ordinances for, or many, most of our ordinances are for boards, committees, and commissions, and then takes the part about the office of the common counsel and the common counsel chief of staff and moves that to chapter three, to a new section in chapter three, which is also sort of more appropriately where we have many of our offices laid out. So I don't think there's many significant changes. The process for hiring was, was updated a little bit. So hopefully folks had a chance to review all those, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I will note that it's a substitute, item five is a substitute, and that one also is sponsored, co-sponsored by Alders Weller and and Alder Carter. And so there were a couple tweaks to that, to that version that we were all agreeing on.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Is there any questions or comments on either of these items? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Alder Foster, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move a recommendation for approval of items four and five.
And specifically with item five, the substitute?
Correct.
Okay, can I get, thank you, Vice President Curry. Any, any discussion? Not seeing any. I'm going to assume anonymous consent unless I see otherwise. All right, taking care of business, moving on. Item number six on our agenda is next, legislative item 70880. This is our appointment of our common council chief of staff. This employment contract was waiting on recommendations based on these, the last two items, so that contract matches what's in the ordinance. I don't think there's much to present, but I think Karen probably can answer questions if you have questions. And if there's any discussion, please. Alder Heck, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Karen for working for free all this time.
Alder Heck has not worked with Karen enough to know that stuff like that shocks her, so obviously. For the record, for those watching at home, Karen has provisionally been appointed. It is not working for free. Any other questions or, or things to shock Karen about Karen's contract? Not seeing any. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Alders. Any discussion? Karen, go ahead.
Sorry, I missed the second.
That was Alder Figurale Call. Any discussion? Okay, unless I see otherwise, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. Alder, Vice President Curry, please go ahead.
Does this mean our post is going live tomorrow? You don't have to answer that rhetorical. I'm just excited to start being able to make movement towards filling some of the council office vacancies. So congratulations, Karen, and thank you for everyone's work on this.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. I think, I think the goal is to get Karen's old job advertised ASAP, once this contract's approved. Okay, so we, we had approval by unanimous consent. There were no objections, so I do not see Alder Hallerson here. So I would prefer him being here, and since we still have plenty of time in the meeting, I'm actually, Alder Foster, go ahead.
I would move to lay this on the table until Alder Hallerson arrives.
All right.
Second.
Any objection? Seeing none, then we will move on to the Alder vacancy process and have a discussion about that, legislative item 71715. And I wanted to put this on our agenda this evening to give people the opportunity to talk about the process we used for D3 and at CCEC and see if there are any suggestions for improvements or changes. One of the things to note for the vacancy hearing that we're going to have tomorrow is that we only have four people. For our last hearing, we had five. And so I think one of the thoughts is to, instead of doing two rounds, do one round. But I'm curious if there's some feedback on it. I'm happy to open up the note I sent out if people want to walk through that. There are certainly some, some good suggestions that we shared and got via email, but I'll open up the floor to Alder Bennett. Go ahead.
Yeah, could you share the, or share the screen of the document you sent? And I do have thoughts, but I think it might be useful to see that, to go through it. Um, and I know you mentioned some people were thinking about going to one round. Personally, I like the two rounds. I don't know. This is how I view review processes, and I felt like the first round helped us. You know, it's like the sifting and winnowing process that we always talk about at UW Madison. It was good to sift and then winnow the candidates from there, so I liked the two rounds.
Alder, let me just ask you a question. Would, I mean, I think the thought on, on making it one round would be if there was like less, four or less. It's sort of, you know, if, if we kept it at two rounds and had four people in round one and then three people in the next, is that a little bit awkward? But I'm happy to get your feedback. I just wanted to at least throw out that thought while you're thinking about it. Should we have a different, like, if it's four or, or fewer, we go with one round, and if it's five or more, we go with two rounds? That's one thing that was suggested, but I apologize for interrupting. I just at least wanted to get that out there.
No worries. I'll just listen for a second.
No, I'm done. I'm done. I'm done just interjecting that part about the two different sizes. Alder Bennett, you have the floor. Please continue. My apologies.
No worries. I'll, I'll wait.
You want to hear other feedback before you participate? Okay, thank you. Vice President Curry, go ahead.
I have more so a procedural, procedural question based on Legisstar, so I'll let others go first who have feedback.
Alder Figurale Call, go ahead.
I mean, I also prefer the two rounds. I think that gives you a good overview of the individual and then narrowing down to the tougher questions. But on the second round, I think putting a limit to a time limit will benefit not, you know, benefit the candidates to just kind of have a better, um, I don't know, summary, wrap up, whatever of what they're trying to, to, how they, on their answer. And if there's additional questions, we can always, we can always ask more questions or provide them additional time if needed. But I think having or providing a soft time limit will be, will be beneficial on the second round.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. I get the idea of not having a timed second round, or a timed second round, excuse me. But, you know, because we already tell them five minutes for the first round, and I feel like we should lessen the, I don't know, like the burden on them, because some people don't work well under time crunches. And I just feel like if we just kind of let it be open and give them a free range, we may be able to see more of themselves instead of them like concentrating on, oh my God, what time is that? How much time do I have? So I like it that we have one time round and one non-time round now. If we wanted to switch that and have the first part non-time, because everyone seemed to generally answer that question in a bundle and just let them speak freely about themselves for five minutes, and then we have a timed second part, I'm okay with that too. But I feel like we need one time section and one free to lift that burden on them.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. Alder Abbas, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good to hear other people's feedback. I do agree with you, President Furman. It's such a small number, there are only four people. And for us as a body to listen to them, I think so we could do in one shot. I don't think so having two rounds here is going to make any big difference among the candidate answers or our DCN. It's such a small number, I really don't see a point here doing two rounds on one, round two, unless you want to eliminate two people and move forward two people. Eliminating only one person, I just, I just feel like awkward. And I agree with you. If the body feel like eliminating two people, then I think it would make more sense doing round one and then going on two. But I highly suggest it's such a small number, just doing one round and make it a CNN as a body. That's my feedback. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I can kind of go either way on the one versus two round, but feel like with four candidates or fewer, I'd be fine with just one round. I think with, with more candidates, I do like being able to get it down to the finalists. So I think that's a good suggestion. I, I think that's an interesting point that Alder Conklin made about having it be sort of more open-ended, and we, I mean, you do get to see how they approach it. I guess if it's in the second round, it's not as bad, but it, it can get pretty long, because we do have a lot of questions there. And so I don't, I guess I'm maybe still inclined to have some kind of a time limit or at least, at least a recommendation, or give them some idea of kind of how much content we're looking for from them, just to try and keep it tight. Probably the biggest feedback I'd have is I'd really, I'd really prefer to skip the submitting points per question, per candidate. That was, that felt really tough, especially to do it like real time and not have the benefit of knowing everybody's kind of answers before doing it. So I would definitely support moving to just for each round, if there are more than one rounds, getting all the questions, maybe having the, the stat score sheet for our own, kind of personally, you used to take down notes and kind of help us situate, but then really just do the ranking, the preferred order ranking. I, I think that I would be comfortable just shifting to that and not doing the, not submitting point values and doing the calculations part.
Thank you, Alder Foster. I definitely, we have a few conversations going on, which I appreciate. So I will say, I mean, I think there's that discussion about the rounds and then the discussion about scoring. And so those that, you know, speak, you're welcome to speak about either or both, but I certainly am interested in feedback on both. Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Um, either, thank you, President Furman, either yourself or Karen, please correct me. But I wanted to throw out a couple of things about the amount of questions that we've had in the second round. I'll bet if we have keep one, if we do one round or keep two, and wanted to know what folks thought about that. Understanding more dynamics in terms of the, I don't know if it's a legal or required process in terms of the press release and, and materials and time length for applicants. But one thing that I, one thing that really drew out of the feedback to me was the interview is the second part of the application process, and we're getting the application materials prior. And the task at hand being not necessarily who interviews well or presents the best in that setting, but the totality of their application materials. And so one thought that I actually didn't offer in that feedback that I just thought about was possibly like a scoring of their application materials prior to their application or interview, sorry. And maybe that creating a little less pressure of feeling like, okay, I got to vote right now based on what I just heard, but factoring all of the information that we had and using the interview kind of as the last or the second part of that process. And then I also had a question, the procedural one. I went in Legisstar, I'm not sure if it's just mine. Is there a formal request documents? Because I can't access whatever is attached in Legisstar.
Can I jump in real quick?
Absolutely.
Are we, are we having the same problem perhaps? Is it, is it showing a thing that says you need Adobe and not letting you get tested? Yeah, I am also having the same. Joe, I don't know if there's a way to contact, now that it's in the cloud, we have to contact Granicus, I think. I'm.
So, so the reason that, Karen, the reason that's happening is the way the email was saved was something called a binder file. And so that, you see that a lot. I've seen that in like legal requests for email. But what a binder is very specific to email, and you could have like multiple emails and one PDF as a binder. And so in the future, I just think it was how it was saved, unfortunately, so we could probably replace the attachment with, and, you know, just like print to PDF instead of, and, you know, see, make sure it doesn't have this weird binder thing up top that lists like who sent it and the subject. If it has it there, the browsers seem not to be able to support it. We, we can certainly get that uploaded, at least for the public, so they can see that. I will say the Alders did see these emails, and I did have it up on the screen, but it is that the weird way on how this was printed, unfortunately. We can, we can work on making sure that that's not the case in the future. Joe, I saw you unmuted yourself. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, what I did is I downloaded the PDF to my desktop and opened it there. That works too.
Yeah, that assumes that that's also associated on your desktop with Adobe and not your browser. But yeah.
Sorry, I put my hand down earlier, so to clarify, there is not a actual document that can be used. Okay, that's all.
Yeah, no, the, and, and Vice President Curry, this, this is what was attached that is literally a copy of the email that was sent out to all Alders, which just outlines, here's what we did and some of that feedback. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. But yeah, no, I, I guess the context that you're putting it of like, if there's four or less, it does make sense to only do run rounds. Because like Alder Abbas said, like, unless we're going down to two, we might as well just zero four, then it's fine. As for time limits, I think Alder Conklin, you made a really good point, an interesting point, that it's hard working under time limits. I also think something that was interesting that I noticed from the D3 candidates is some candidates like kind of rambled on and on about something that really wasn't relevant or wasn't really answering the question. And some candidates like were saying, well, I'm just going to stop there because in respect of time, blah, blah, blah. But I felt as though they needed to give more for the answer. So I think we could say, keep your answers to around X amount of minutes, say like five minutes. That leaves leeway for it to go longer or go shorter, but also puts an expectation there that they should last this amount of time. that they should last this amount of time. Um, also, I don't know if it was just me, um, uh, personally in like the first round, I know that you, President Furman, asked like all three questions and at once and they could respond to it however, but for me, that was a bit jarring. Um, because I had to be very suspicious and looking like, okay, are they answering this and this, this question or what? Um, I feel like I, I would have preferred if we just asked each question separately and they answered, they got like, I don't know, one minute, two minutes to answer each question, but that could have just been a me thing. Um, so that's my feedback right now.
Do you want to talk anything about scoring?
Oh, scoring. I think I, um, Vice President Curry had a very great point that we should be scoring based off of the written materials. I, I mean, personally, I thought that we were supposed to be taking that into account anyways. Um, so I don't know if we need to codify that we are supposed to be taking that into account because personally I was taking it into account anyways. So that's my feedback on scoring.
Appreciate that, Alder Bennett. I'll, I'll give some of my thoughts momentarily. Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, I'll preface my remarks with, I don't feel extremely strong, strongly about any of these, but I do see merits and really what most everybody has said. And, and I, in some ways I like, uh, you know, my initial inclination was for what was round two to not have time, I mean, to have time, but, uh, just because it took quite a while. And, uh, I really liked the, what Alder Conklin had to say, and I can see that you learned something when, uh, if somebody goes on for 10 minutes, that tells us something, but it also does give them the opportunity to perhaps shine in a way that they didn't have a chance to earlier. So I, I'm not that, that concerned about time limits. I do appreciate, I think, the idea of having just one round for a lower number of candidates. And the idea that Alder Bennett mentioned, I, I think, uh, about the, uh, the, uh, or maybe it was, no, it was, it was Vice President Curry about the, uh, the, uh, the applications kind of just disappearing in, in our consideration because we were only scoring based on the questions. So some, some method of taking those into account would be great. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alder Heck. Uh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would just gonna offer that for me, I, I did take them into account in the overall ranking um, process. And so I just wanted to raise that again as a, an alternative for folks and wondered if others had thoughts on it. I, I personally would be very comfortable, um, how, again, having a scoring sheet for myself to take notes, et cetera, but then skipping submitting scores per question, which is where I think it did leave the, the application out. And instead just moving directly to the, the overall ranking where we could then take our own notes, scores on different questions as well as the application and just put forward, uh, our own, um, sort of ranking of candidates without the, the scoring numbers. So curious and other thoughts on that.
Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just to jump in, yes, I feel like, yes, everybody considered all materials, but in the way that, okay, this interview is done, now send in your score sheets. I think like there was even feedback live that we didn't want to stray from consistency. But like, ooh, I need a little bit more time or I'm not really sure on this measure. So, um, the idea of scoring before on the application material is just an idea or a tool, um, to remind folks to incorporate that. But also I think providing just a little bit more time or maybe voting by rounds versus after each interview, um, could provide a little bit more of that time. I think cross check, open up some other tabs and see what was reported before.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Uh, Alder Conklin, go ahead.
So I'm gonna speak on, um, the, the scoring process too now. Um, for me, I think I said, it, I, I felt too much pressure to be able to score my, my candidates right then and there, you know? Like I definitely like Alder Foster's idea where we can have, leave it open. So if I say that one person is a one and I compare the other one to a two, you know, I gotta see what that difference is. And I'm very old school, so I'm looking at the application, I'm taking notes, you know, I, I got all these things, I got my scoring sheet down, how I want to have it. So I think if, if we can score them at the end, so we get a full earful of what everyone's saying and then we can compare it to our notes and other things like that. So I think that's a great idea to really keep the scoring open and not have so much pressure on us to pick, you know, what we feel is, was unacceptable the first round with somebody, you know, we may not feel like that's unacceptable for the second round. So, yeah, those are just my thoughts on that. So thank you.
That's helpful. Thank you. Uh, Alder Bennett, go ahead.
I, I really agree with that. Um, I liked how in the chief of staff interviews, we were able to score at the end. And that was super helpful to have all the materials there and like have done, completed all the interviews and be able to like look through and see, okay, I scored this candidate like this and I'm scoring this candidate like this. And this is, you know, being able to compare and con- contrast. Um, shoot, I had a second point that I can't remember now. I, oh, anyways, I, I really like that. Oh, also, um, I don't know if I missed anything, but I feel like there should be a, like, short, like two sentence paragraph describing like what is, or we should understand what we all consent to being unacceptable, poor, acceptable, whatnot. Because my idea of what is acceptable is, might not be what someone else's is.
Yeah, I think, uh, we'll talk about the scoring more in a second, but that is such a problem because I agree, I don't know if there's any, any way to find consensus on what you think is poor versus what I think is poor or what Alder Heck thinks is porous, et cetera. That's really difficult. I think my suggestion, um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw out, uh, Ald, uh, Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Sorry, the ideas are just flowing as folks talk. So, um, on a spectrum, like maybe if the, for me, the wording was different, if it wasn't poor exemplary or like satisfactory, unsatisfactory. Um, I don't know, that, this might be getting into semantics, but I struggled a little bit with that because I felt like there wasn't really a, if you're going from one to five, like a in-between or I'm not sure option either. Um, and maybe that satisfies what Alder Bennett was just kind of talking about in terms of that diversification of thought.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm gonna talk about, um, scoring in a second. Um, I also, by the way, Karen just said the attachment should be fixed for anybody watching at home and wants to click on those legislative items. Um, I, I think, I think having some sort of assignment to the actual points are helpful because, um, you know, somebody's one or two could be completely different than somebody's, you know, others wanting to. So I guess you end up just dealing with the same problem. I want to throw out, let, let, let's talk about the rounds and let's talk about the time and then we'll go into a scoring discussion. I think, I think the suggestion I would suggest to CCEC and see if there's any objections is that we do, if there's four or less, we go with one round. Um, I just, I think it's awkward to, um, exclude just one person. Um, and I think it's nice to hear people's, um, uh, you know, answers. I'd rather have two than three. Um, I appreciated Alder Aboss saying, if we're going to go down from four, we should at least be considering two and not three. But I do think we should stick to four if it's four or less. And then for the second round, my thought would maybe be to tell people that they should be targeting somewhere around five, but not be hard about that. Um, if we have three or four candidates with seven questions going 10 minutes a question, um, we are going to be sitting there for a very long time. And I do think there's something to be said about council meetings and the length we talk at council meetings about things, um, where, you know, being concise is good. Um, I don't want to be too, too concise, um, because, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out who the people are. Um, so I think, you know, giving somebody just a rough, um, target of five minutes, but not, you know, buzzing them out when they hit five minutes, but just say, hey, we're looking for an answer somewhere around five minutes, but, um, you know, could, could kind of go with the flow would be my suggestion. So what do, what do people think about keeping five minutes, um, for that, that first three questions? Um, whether that's just a round one and then in round two for those other questions, not having a hard five minutes, but, um, you know, telling people, hey, um, you know, that's, that should be your target. Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm, I'm fine with that, but I would use some phrase like a maximum of five minutes or some, some way that they recognize taking two minutes. If they can do so is just fine.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm cool with that. I think it should be like an expectation of no more than five minutes, um, or something like that. And also I'm wondering like, uh, from feedback from you all, like, do you think five minutes is too long? Um, not long enough? Um, I don't really know. So I feel like if I'm gonna answer for like seven questions, that's like 35 minutes. Just long.
Alder Figurall, call, go ahead.
Yeah, just again, like, um, Alder Heck just mentioned, we just tell them is up to five minutes. They can take two minutes, three minutes. It doesn't, we're not saying prepare five minutes. We're just saying up to that, that, that should do it. I mean, the, the last interview, we have people like that, that they just, they took less than the five minutes. So I think it is important to, I think it would be beneficial for, for the person coming in to know, to have a marker, like how much, you know, how much time do I have? How much can I pack on that time? Whatever. So.
Uh, thank you.
I'm agreeing with that suggestion.
Thank you. Uh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Um, I, I personally would be supportive of trying to make it a little bit more concise. I'm just thinking back of like Know Your Candidate interview questions or any like debates or whatever that, you know, people running. I mean, you never get more than three minutes, I don't think, for most answers and most kind of candidate settings. So I would be, I'd be in favor of tightening it up, but I don't, like, I don't feel super strongly about it. The other thing is we could, um, I mean, it is, it's, it is a lot, seven questions in that second round. So I, I mean, we could also leave it at five, but maybe seem like there were a couple that we could combine together, like the, you know, what are, what are your district specific issues? And what are city issues that could potentially be a two-part, one question for five minutes rather than each one getting five. But I mean, I don't know, maybe it's starting to get too far into the weeds, but in general, I'd be more supportive of pushing them to be concise. Cause yeah, we can learn about candidates, but I think it's, it's really critical for a successful candidate to be able to say their point in a couple of minutes.
Thank you, Alder Foster. I think that, that opens up an interesting question about how many questions we're asking. I, I, I would only guess that our previous, um, seven questions was to involve every member of CCEC and give them each member an opportunity to ask questions. Um, you know, I, I, I don't want people to, to feel left out when it comes to asking questions, but also agree that at some point, some of these questions could be combined. Um, you know, I, we, I, you know, we're gonna, I want to spend a few more minutes. I, I want to spend a few minutes on scoring, so I don't know how much we want to go down the rabbit hole of the amount of questions. Um, but, but I, but the fear of feedback I'm definitely hearing is tell people, you know, up to, up to five minutes, um, for those questions. And, uh, turn the floor over to Alder Heck. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, if, if we could reduce the number of questions by one or two, I'd be perfectly happy to give up my slot for, for asking a question.
Yeah, and I see a bunch of hands agreeing. So, um, I would be fine with, you know, I, I think there's one question that's very easy to combine, um, which is the important issues in both your district and the city. Um, since I asked the first round of questions, um, I'm happy not to ask that question. Um, and then, you know, I think I, I will, I will talk to Vice President Curry about some of the other questions. If people have suggestions on a question either to combine or get rid of, uh, shoot me a note and we can work on that. Um, I think there's, it sounds like there's overwhelming feedback to, um, axing the idea of, um, scoring, um, each of the interviews as they're happening, um, or after they're happening. Um, I think, um, I probably between now and tomorrow can send everybody a spreadsheet of some sort to work with so that you can score it on your own. Um, you know, if you, if you wish to do so. Um, so, uh, you know, I think if we were in a more formal environment, you'd have a piece of paper that you could write down about the candidate. And, um, I don't know how much room people have on their desks for paper and in their hybrid situation, uh, in their, you know, virtual situation. Um, but I will give somebody, people toolkits to work with, um, for, for tomorrow. Um, thoughts on changing from actual score? Um, so at the end, you know, doing this, you know, uh, either one to four thing, whatever scale that means, um, to just switching to a ranked, um, type thing. So similar to that, um, that, well, actually it would be that pivot thing that we did use, um, in our last, um, process as a tiebreaker and has been used in the past for other processes. So would people prefer at the end of the interviews saying, this is my first, second, third, fourth candidate? Or would you prefer sticking to a one to four system, um, scoring for each of the questions? And then having that added up and having the tiebreaker, um, with, uh, you know, the software. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Again, I think we need to return to the issue of like, hmm, what is this rank of one to four? What is poor? What is acceptable? Um, and I also think I, uh, maybe you could remind me, but I don't remember like the point of like ranking, like each question one to four, when at the end of it, we did a rank anyways. Um, of like, we, we ranked them, like we put our top choice at the top and then, you know, second, third. So.
That was gonna be used as a tiebreaker in case we did have a tie with a third or fourth position. And that was also gonna be used to help us in the second round. I will say that the results for round one in D three for the third, for the third and fourth place, um, were flipped, um, on the, on the ranked, um, the, the ranked method and the scoring method, but because the scores were incredibly close. Um, but the, the top two picks were, were identical. And in the second round, people's rankings matched up exactly with the scores. Um, so, um, from experience and from the previous vacancies where they used it, my understanding is it's, the, the first choice has always been the first choice. Um, the second choice has, I think, always been the second choice is my understanding. So I do think we get pretty close with that rank process, but again, we use both almost as, you know, just to, uh, help and aid, um, if, if we ended up running into trouble. I will say, while, while I'm still, uh, talking, Alder Bennett, if you have suggestions on one, one to four means, um, I'm happy to throw it out there, but that's, I think that's the struggle is like, you know, what, what, what is poor? Um, what is exemplary? I think, I, I don't think we're come to consensus, even if we had a sentence or two about each of those definitions. I think we're all gonna struggle and just have different views on what's some considered poor and what's considered exemplary.
Right, exactly. And, and I guess for me, that's my problem with the scoring system. Is that there is, we have seven people with seven ideas of what poor means or what acceptable means. I don't, if we're not all using the exact same, like, idea of what poor and acceptable means, then I, I don't know. I, I have a problem with that. And I think it, the ranked choice method is more indicative of who we think the best candidate is than a scoring method. That's, um, quite subjective to the Alder.
Appreciate that, Alder Bennett. Thank you. Uh, Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you, but I, can I defer to City Attorney Haas who has his hand up?
As long as, as long as the other person in front of Attorney Haas in the queue, yep. Uh, Attorney Haas, I know you've been geeking out on this. Um, uh, please share.
Thanks. And, um, I just wanted to provide a little bit of feedback on Alder Bennett's comment. I, I think that's, it's a good point, but ultimately, you know, this is, it's not a hiring process where it's important that you all have, you know, you'd all have the, uh, the same benchmark that you are grading an applicant against. This is an inherently, uh, you know, subjective political, for lack of a better word, process. Ultimately, each of you gets to vote on who is the best candidate. And that, that can mean, uh, uh, as some of you have said, that can mean something different to each of you. So I think not only is it, would it be difficult to come up with your benchmarks that everybody would agree upon, but it's also not necessary. You have one question to answer. Who do you support to fulfill this, this position? And so i- in my view, uh, it, it's, it's not really, um, I, I guess I wouldn't get so hung up on trying to come to an agreement about what makes an excellent candidate, poor or fair or whatever. Because you're all just, as long as you're not making. what makes an excellent candidate for poor or fair or whatever, because you're all just, as long as you're not making a, as long as you are not basing your, your decision on a discriminatory factor, you're free to vote for whoever you like, for whatever reason you you like. And so, um, that's, that's why I wouldn't get too hung up on trying to come to an agreement about um, what, what a good answer is or what, what makes a good candidate. That's up to each of you to decide in the end.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. That's helpful. Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that, uh, I would not be in favor of expanding the number of options of how we could rank them, you know, one through five or one through six or whether it's words, because I think that then, uh, gets even more into the problem that Alder Bennett was referring to about differences in interpretations of scores are accentuated in that circumstance. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Figaro, call.
So if we leave the one to, if we leave the ranking behind and we just do the, the, I mean, if we leave the score behind and we just move to ranking, how will you manage a, a tie? Do you have a separate question or? Do we begin? How does that go?
I, I think how the ranking works, I don't believe there would be a tie, and I can send some more details on how that works. It's it's called ranked pairs. Um, and you will, there will be a winner. Um, there, uh, the way, it does, it does these one-to-one matchups. Um, there's, there's a lot of thing. Uh, I will, I will send some more details out to all alders to, to, so you could better understand um, how, how this is, how one of the ranked choice technologies. Um, but I, I, there will, there will, there won't be a tie.
Right, so I, I would, I would, I would be supportive of just having a ranking instead of having to do the one to four. We do the, we do our homework in our, in our sheet that you, we provided on the side. We keep track of the answers. We base on that, then we come to a conclusion. This is, I, I, it's the order that I, that I want to vote. I'm one of my life. That's, I will support something like that.
Thank you, Alder Figaro. Call. We have some other non-CCEC alders here. Um, I just want to make it clear, as always, these items are, are open to you folks as well. So if you have any thoughts, please raise your hand, share. Um, we're, we're certainly interested in all alders, um, feedback here. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So we will, I will send out an update tomorrow based on this discussion. Um, we will have a, a, a slightly revised process. Um, but I think it, I really appreciate this discussion here today. I think we'll be building on the success of our D3 and, and, uh, uh, you know, doing a good job for, for the upcoming ones. Um, and having a little bit of a, a different number thing, if it's four or less, one round, if it's a five or more, two rounds, and see if we can consolidate any more of the questions other than just one of them. Um, and five minutes, uh, at most five minutes and, and a ranking um, scoring and a score sheet for folks to use in whatever, uh, format they'd like to use, um, whether that's Google Docs or Excel, and that way you can keep notes. Um, all right, um, we still don't have Alder Haverson. I do, I think that's an important item. Um, so I do want to go back to, you know, that item on our agenda, um, so we can make a recommendation for the council meeting. I was hopeful that the alder would join us, um, and give us more of his thoughts. Um, so we'll, we'll bring back item number seven, one, two, eight, nine, amending section two dot oh, three, three and two dot oh, three, four to revise the process for filling council, common council vacancies. Um, I don't know if anybody has any discussion on this or a recommendation. Um, again, I was hopeful that the alder would join us to talk to us about his thoughts and his intent. Um, but the, the floor is open either for questions of our attorney related to it or, or discussion and a motion. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Um, well, I, I mean, I hesitate a little bit not having heard from Alder Halverson on it, but I, I mean, there's a, there's a number of different things that, uh, kind of created some questions or concerns for me with it. Um, so I guess at this point, if we're, if we're supposed to give a recommendation, I guess I would, I, I don't support it right now. So I don't know if there's anybody else that I'd like to hear from anybody else that does and, and understand how this would improve on the, the process. But at this point, I guess I'm, I'm just sharing, I'm not inclined to support it.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any other thoughts? Alder Figaro, call, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I can visualize how that would look like on an open floor, having twenty people, um, having a discussion about two people that are volunteering to fill a temporary position, a short-term temporary position. So I, I wouldn't support that either. I think, um, it has worked thus far. I, I rather, unless, unless I can see, unless there's a, a, a plan already spelled out or how will that be managed? Um, I, I can support that. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Alder Figaro. Call. Still think we have, Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I, I feel similarly as to what we've already heard. My, my biggest concern is the three-quarter threshold in that, you know, it, it really is, has the potential to act as a filibuster-type problem that they have in the US Senate. So, uh, I, I, I think for that reason, I, I also am inclined not to support this. And whether we refer it to, uh, a future CCEC meeting, make that recommendation to council. Uh, so Alder Halverson can have the opportunity to present his case or place it on file. I'm, I'm okay with either one of those.
Uh, Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Can I clarify that this, the resolution, if approved and passed, would serve for future vacancies going forward or just for the vacancies we have in front of us now?
Um, Attorney Haas, could you clarify the timing if the council were to approve this, how that would work?
Well, uh, of course, what, if it's enacted and then signed by the mayor, that process takes, you know, uh, a week, week and a half to complete. And then it's, becomes effective on the day after publication. Um, and, uh, so, let's see, I'm just looking at the calendar here. Um, you know, the, so let's assume that it gets published the day, published before the next council meeting. Uh, I don't, I don't think it really, I mean, it wouldn't affect the, any process that's happened before that time. So if CCEC has acted before that time, I don't think, um, it would be subject to the new ordinance. Um, uh, I'm just trying to look at the ordinance here, if there's any pieces that. I, I think really, um, well, I, I think probably the, the three-fourths vote would be in effect. If this ordinance was in effect prior to the council acting, then it would require a three-fourth vote. I don't think it would really, I don't think the piece about recommending two candidates would necessarily be in effect if CCEC has already acted to make a recommendation. Might have to think about that more, but I think at least the three-fourths vote requirement would be in effect.
So going forward, out of six, seven meeting, where our intent is to likely be appointing D11 and D20, um, and that this would, that would be in effect, but for tonight, obviously with our D3, that would not be in effect.
Right, correct.
Thank you. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say for this right now, as it stands, I'm not inclined to support it. But I would like to hear from Alder Halverson about his intentions with this. Um, the reason why I'm not is kind of what Alder Heck just mentioned is the filibuster matter. Or, or, and it, just like, this whole process is sped up to a point where it's, it's a really fast process anyways, and it's because we need to be working expeditiously to appoint someone to these positions. Um, and I could see a negative impact of if we recommend two people to council that can make the process more cumbersome and lengthy than it needs to be. Um, however, I can sympathize with my colleagues that are not CCEC that want to, you know, that maybe don't agree with the recommendation that we have. So I guess a question that I have is how can alders that disagree with our recommendation? How could they impact, um, whoever we appoint?
Sure. So I can clarify, our current ordinance, um, does say that they can appoint either our recommendation or one of the other people that applied. Um, the only thing that we're not doing now is actually, um, uh, that this ordinance is trying, this ordinance change is trying to do is we're not giving them to, uh, the council, two people to, to look at. Um, so if they were, if another alder wanted to pick, um, somebody other than the recommendation, um, they would have to guess who our second choice was if that's what they were looking to do. Um, and then obviously, this is also increasing the threshold for the amount of, of votes necessary to confirm, um, whatever the pick is.
I also wonder, um, to that point, like, is it really? I mean, this is a rhetorical question, but is it, is it really helpful for us to recommend two alders? When, for example, for the District 20 position, we only have four applicants. And to one of that down to only two, um, and recommend two, be just, um, I don't think as productive as making one, a single recommendation.
Uh, thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Figaro, call.
Is there, is there a good time for me to do a motion?
Um, Alder Conklin, were you looking to do that as well? Did you have some thoughts? You were looking to possibly do a motion? Okay, Alder Figaro, call. Since you're first in the queue, go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to place the file without prejudice. And if the alder wants to pull it out, put, you know, bring it back into the floor and before we can discuss it when he's, when he's available.
Okay, um, we got a second. Um, uh, any discussion?
So again, um, I think it, it is a, an important, um, it's something important to take a look at, and I would like to understand better what the process will look like. And this will give an opportunity for the alder to, um, to come back, to, to come back to the floor whenever he's available and, and we can discuss it further, further. So.
Alder, so we're clear. I mean, if this is placed on file, he needs to reintroduce it, so he actually won't. Um, uh, okay, um, thank you. Um, any, any other discussion thoughts? Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a clarification, was the motion to place on file or place on file without prejudice?
I think, I think Alder Figaro called said without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Okay, so it could come back, uh, in its current form then, uh, or noted, if it, if it's placed on file without prejudice, it, it, uh, can come, it can come back in its current form, right?
Yes, there's nothing opposite from coming back in the current form.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts or discussion? Um, Karen, um, I, I wish to be recorded as a no. Um, I would have preferred this be referred. Um, any, any other, uh, so any, any other vote changes, any, any roll call? Or I'm just going to assume unanimous consent with the exception of me who is voting no. All right, um, so, uh, item, uh, recommendation passes and, um, uh, we will move on to, um, the next item. Um, we have, uh, a, a lot more items on our agenda. Um, we have about another half hour before IT is going to, uh, rightfully so, kick us out because I need to get ready for the council meeting. Um, I don't expect all of it to get done, um, but I know there are some, um, uh, discussion that we want to have with, uh, the next item on our agenda, which would be, uh, item number nine, seven, zero, six, four, two, um, related to the, um, establishing a council, uh, common council, uh, policy, uh, on prohibited harassment and/or discrimination. Um, and then we also do have Alder Rahilly, um, to go over accepting the final report of the President's Work Group on Racial Justice and Racism and Equity, which is item number ten. I'm going to ask Alder Rahilly if she has her preference on which one we take up next, um, knowing that that might be the last item we talk about for the evening. Go ahead, Alder Rahilly. Up, you're still muted. Alder Rahilly, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll prefer if I can, uh, give the report.
Okay, um, so if there's no objection, we're going to move on to item number ten, um, seven, one, uh, zero, three, six. Um, the report, uh, from, uh, the President's Work Group on Racial Justice and Racism and Equity. Um, seeing no objection, Alder Rahilly, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, let's see. Thank you. Okay, so the President's Work Group on Social Justice, Anti-Racism and Equity was established and charged with providing, uh, policy recommendation on participatory budget and creating a framework for all the boards, committees, and commission around anti-racism, equity, and inclusion training. The workshop, uh, the work group met eleven times between August twenty-one and April twenty-twenty-two. Uh, work group members include myself as the chair, Alder Charles Miazzi as a vice chair, Alder Brian Benford, Alder, uh, Barbara Harrington McKinney, Alder Nikki Conklin, and Alder Sherry Cutter. So we were charged with two items, the BCC and also participatory budget. So I'll just talk about, uh, the takeaway and then some of the recommendations that we made. Uh, the takeaway was it was vital to cultivate connections with the community members in order to provide effective education and outreach when implementing participatory budget, uh, program. Uh, the city of Durham, North Carolina engaged, uh, community members, steering committee, and hired a dedicated staff members to manage the project. The city of Seattle, uh, uh, also made sure the new participatory budget program was well-resourced in outset. They also budgeted for outside consultant to manage the budget. Uh, participatory budget at this time is visionary, uh, and in order to achieve this, we first need to strengthen and the foundation of understanding and deep connection to the community about the current budget process, including, uh, outcome, uh, budgeting, uh, training, retention, strategy, connection, and to ask the why, why we are doing this and why we want to connect with the community. Uh, the participatory budget is a broader range of approaches to increasing community members input into various aspects of municipal budget, where community members are provided with entry points of all stages of budget process and are able to make decisions or provide guidance on which the city projects are funded. Uh, so the work group, uh, invited a couple of speakers from Durham, North Carolina, and also, uh, Seattle. Their recommendation, there are four recommendations for the participatory budget, but I'll just, uh, share one. Uh, the report is attached, so you can read on your own. Uh, to improve education and outreach with community members about existing city budget, capital budget, and operating budget. Have a more focused group with community leaders about the budget process and how they would like to engage. Engage with community centers about budget process and increase alders' engagement with community centers. Educate members of the community, including Black community leaders, not already widely known, uh, in details about the budget process and city structure. Engagement and collaboration with the Neighborhood Resource Team, NRTs, and Department of Civil Rights, DCR, in budget process. Provide alders with quarterly training on the budget, uh, process, starting in January, on how to be interactive when the budget season starts. Engaging with faith communities on the budget process. Educate residents on how to engage the city staff and alders on the budget process interesting in productive way, uh, to provide tips and tricks, who to ask, when to ask, how to ask, and create materials to focus on how residents can, uh, connect with the staff and official the areas of the interest. So that was the budget, uh, as far. So that was the budget. Uh, as far as the uh the B C C, uh, the B C C, uh, the work group uh discussed the current boards, commissions, and committees, uh, members of recruitment, appointment, and training. Uh, we invited the mayor's office. Uh, we invited Kara uh uh from the Performance Excellence uh uh Department. And one of the takeaway was uh the mayor really focused on, she said, uh, instead of focusing more on the recruitment, it's good to uh focus on retention. And that's why uh the uh work group really took away from the Department of Civil Rights, uh Norman Davis, who really emphasized the changing of the culture of the B C C. And then also Melissa Gamber, who truly talked about why, why we, you know, the why of uh uh the B C C when they are serving on the committee. The work group discussed ideas of racial equity, social justice, the rest analysis training for B C C's officers, and members with the Department of Civil Rights, and reviewed proposed B C C uh members' self-evaluation uh policy, which you have seen in the past. Uh, the recommendation again is, you know, there are four recommendations, but I'll just walk through one. Uh, focusing on changing the culture with the city B C C system and improving onboarding and retention on Pi Pak P C C officers and members. Help these B C C members to connect with the why, why they are serving on the city commission committees and and the boards, and make sure they are devoting their time and resources to a meaningful activities. Make sure every B C C has known its mission, connecting to the city's vision, mission, values, and the values of the public service. Create standard of behavior for B C C meetings that encourage equitable and respectful engagement among members. Work to set expectation within each B C C regarding standard of behavior, process, and engagement. Again, there are long um explanations and uh uh recommendations. And I think, you know, one of the next steps, you know, three things are for each, whether it's for the budget or whether it's for the B C C. Uh, for, and those three areas are educating the community, you know, break down the silos between the city and the community organization members. Create an authentic and genuine education programs to deepen our connection with the community and organization that goes beyond the scope of the current practice, which meets people where they are at. Uh, community outreach and communication, uh, create community connections, website where there's information on valuable fundings and materials on how to apply. That's in the side of the budget. Uh, create and have available brochures about the budget process in various languages, which can share in a place of worship, community centers, and library. And then finally is the community partnership in terms of the budget. Create mechanism for keeping the community engaged in the outcomes of the budget process, uh, how the feedback was used, and how to demonstrate accountability to promise, uh, promises made uh to the community during the process. A lot of the time, we see that we uh uh invite the community for uh feedback, for focus group, but we never know where that uh information goes. So be intentional about what we do with those information that, you know, it's it's related to the community. In regards to the B C C, uh, again, the three areas is education. Create a training plan for B C C officers that include training on restitutes, concepts, leadership, and facilitation on how to create, maintain welcoming environment. Create comprehensive onboarding strategy for B C C officers, members which aligns with the B C C mission with individual members. Again, the why, why, you know, individuals should uh focus and serve on the uh city uh boards, commissions, and and committees. And the third one is the community outreach and communication. Uh, be intentional on how we recruit uh the uh B C C, uh, have a plan tailored to communicate that harder-to-reach communities are met and which meets people where they are at. So it's not just like, you know, we have the vacancies and we just fill with, you know, with who we know, but rather reaching out to those individuals who can really make impact in the uh in the city's work. Develop materials that intentionally focus on why public participation in the B C C is valuable, which connects to the city's missions and values. And finally, uh, community partnership. You know, when we are working as a city, uh, we need to look at the community as partnership. Develop uh programs to support, you know, B C C participation on city committees, including transportation, bus passes, parking, childcare technology ass- assessment, and childcare meetings. Create implementation for transparent process of B C C appointment, including monthly update to C C C on B C C vacancies as planned uh for the appointment. And finally, develop a plan to proactively and intentionally identify potential B C C members in various areas of the community. So those are some of the areas. It's a very comprehensive uh report. I just want to thank my uh the committee who served on this, but also Karen, who was our staff and did a phenomenal work. So uh with that, I am here to answer any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Alder. Um, any questions? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Uh, not a question, but just wanted to uh give my thanks. It was a really, really good report, and I know it's really challenging to um to manage those committees, and I I really appreciate all the recommendations that came out of it. Just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Abbas, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you, the Chair, uh, Alder Wihili, and also the Vice Chair and the whole committee, all the members. I congratulate them for their hard work. It requires a really heavy lift, and thank you very much for your service and working so hard and providing great recommendations. So really appreciate you and all the committee members. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Any other?
I might too want to join in on uh thanking uh you, Alder, for chairing the committee, as well as all the members that participated. Um, definitely agree with Alder Foster. These are not easy committees, and and summarizing all that work is is not easy, but appreciate the summary and and look forward to this being part of our discussions as we're looking at improving um our engagement in the council um going forward. Uh, it'll be a big focus here at C C E C and definitely will be um using uh that work and and uh as as a as a helpful guide and and hope that you're here participating with us. Um, so uh, can I get a motion?
Well.
Oh, I'll go ahead, Alder Wihili, go ahead. Did you want to add something, Alder? No? Okay, Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Um, I guess we appro- I'm not exactly sure of the approval motion, maybe I should lower it. But a move to approve.
Uh, repor- uh, uh, recommend accepting the report. Yep.
Recommend accepting the report. That's all, yeah.
Alder Foster, is that a second?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Um, seeing none, I'm going to um assume approval by unanimous consent. Uh, Alder Wihili, go ahead.
Just I want to thank uh the committee. Thank you so much for having me and presenting this uh report, and thank you for supporting it.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got about fifteen minutes left. Um, we still have item number nine, eleven, twelve, and thirteen on our agenda. Um, I would like to have a little bit more space to discuss nine than fifteen minutes. I think there's some summary information about some activities that Karen has been working on and then some questions out there. Um, but I'm uh open for somebody making a suggestion on should we look at nine or eleven or twelve or thirteen? If we don't take nine, um, the suggestion would be to refer that to our uh six-one meeting. Um, if we don't take eleven, twelve, thirteen, we do have an option of bringing that up tomorrow, but if we do take eleven, twelve, thirteen, um, we we can uh uh possibly approve that today at the council. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Um, I I've I could give really quick summaries of eleven, twelve, thirteen, and I think they're all pretty straightforward, so I'd be in favor of trying to get those done if the body's willing.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Bennett, thoughts?
Move to refer nine to the six-one meeting.
Alder Conklin, is that a second? All right, um, any any uh discussion thoughts on that? Okay, um, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent, and we'll move to item number eleven, seven one three one five. Alder Foster, uh, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, Chair. Uh, so item eleven is um uh pretty straightforward. Uh, essentially, it will just take off the the title on the agenda that says Special Order of Business starting at six forty-five for the public comment, public hearings. Um, this is, uh, I think we had a a meeting recently where we had, I think there was a retirement, some honoring resolutions, maybe it was the one where we had our um uh leadership election, and I think public comment didn't start till like eight o'clock or later. And I heard comments from folks about feeling like it said six forty-five is when that was going to start, and they felt like it was really frustrating to to have that expectation. So this would basically just pull that off of there since we never really respect it anyways. Um, we always go through our honoring resolutions and our consent agenda first and then do our our public comments. So um this wouldn't really change the order of business anyway. It would just take that off. So everyone would see where it's at in the agenda, but not have any um false expectations around actually getting the public comment within fifteen minutes of the start of our meeting. Maybe I'll pause on that one and see if anybody has any questions.
Any questions or discussion? Alder Foster, we're just going to take them up one at a time. Um, I uh and so we could probably do some pretty quick um uh approval or if if there are no questions. I think the only other thing that I wanted to point out, to be very clear, that I've been including in my consent agenda, we'll get used to, is public hearings can and will be on the consent agenda going forward unless they're pulled out. And I think this new language makes that incredibly clear to everybody that there is no, you know, having to cycle through each public hearing if there's no, no, nobody's pulling that off consent. So um can I get a motion? Alder Figaro call, do you have a discussion or a motion? Motion, okay. Um, and then a second for Alder Conklin. Um, any discussion on that motion? Not seeing any, I will assume approval by unanimous consent. Uh, we're going to move on to Agenda Night, item number twelve, um, which is uh seven three, seven one three one seven, amending section two point oh two nine five of the Madison General Ordinance Regarding Public Comment at Common Council Meetings. Alder Foster, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, so this one um is intended to give the the council the ability to not take public comment on an item that we are, that we refer to a future meeting as part of the consent agenda. So we've, I think everyone here probably knows of those examples where uh for whatever reason, sometimes it went to Plan Commission, their recommendation is to re-refer to Plan Commission. It's on the consent agenda to do that. We all know that that's what's going to happen. Technically, people can still sign up for it, give their comment. Often, the mayor tries to uh head them off and encourage them and say, hey, F Y I, we're probably, you know, we're probably not going to take this up tonight, but we still kind of go through the motions. And then you've got some people sharing their feedback there when we're not really prepared to um to to work on it. So this would give us the ability that if um if the if the recommendation on the consent agenda is to refer to a future meeting, and we pass that motion, then we would not have to pull it off of the consent agenda and take public comment. So it does that. And the second thing it does is if for an item where we have had public comment already, but let's say our deliberation gets very long and it's midnight, and we say, uh, we just don't have the stamina to take up this last item, but we already took all the public comment on it, we can refer that item to a future meeting and not have to take up public comment again on it, um, because we already took it. It does give us the option to take public comment again if we want to, uh, with a two-thirds vote of the council. Um, so that option is still available, but it wouldn't require us to open up another round of public comment for an item that we refer to a future meeting after we've already had it. So that's the kind of the two things that this one does.
Uh, Alder Hack, go ahead.
Uh, a question. I I just want to make sure I understand the first circumstance. If if uh uh an item um that that has a recommended motion to refer to another meeting, let's say, a a a recommended course of action, and uh it it will still be on the agenda so that if someone does want to give public comment, they can still register, and then it will come off the uh consent agenda. Is that correct?
No, so this would actually would not, the simply the act of registering for comment would not pull it off the consent agenda if the recommended action is to refer to a future meeting. If the recommended action is to adopt or to do anything else, it would, it would not be on the consent agenda, and it would allow comment. The other thing is that an alder can still pull the item off the consent agenda, even though the recommended action is refer to a future meeting. And if the item is pulled, then we would take public comment. So if there is somebody that really wants to give comment on something, an alder could ask for it to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Got it. I guess my concern really is is will the the regis- the public comment registration system be in sync with all of that? Uh, you know, if if uh there isn't going to be public comment allowed, then people shouldn't be able to register for it. Uh, so, and and if it does get pulled, then somebody would quickly be able to register uh in.
Yeah, I think we'd have to let um let the registrations happen, and it would just simply be if uh when that happens, the mayor would just have to note this item is being referred, and public comment will be accepted at whatever meeting that we're referring it to. So theoretically, it would still let people register. It just wouldn't be called on until until we actually take the item up.
Is, got it. As long as the the mayor is always explicit about that, then that sounds fine to me. Thanks.
Alder Figaro call, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want, just want to, I just want us to be very intentional on communicating these changes to the public, either via press release or blogs, whatever, whatever methods are out there. So um if this passes, um, you know, this goes through um as a final decision, we'll definitely get on that communication wagon as soon as possible. That's that's my only ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Figaro call. Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's a a great suggestion. I'd be happy to um help make sure that we get something drafted um and out. The only other thing I wanted to raise, we did get an email about public comment on this that suggested perhaps lowering the threshold um to a simple majority if the council wanted to sort of take public comment again. I actually thought that was a a reasonable recommendation. So I guess I might even um, well, I'll I'll just put that out there. Maybe if somebody else wants to make a motion, but I think um maybe recommending it with that that change. I don't know what others feel about it, but I I I would be supportive of that. I thought it was a good comment from the public.
Thank you, Alder Foster. I think related to that, there was a a thought that if there is a a very long period of time between the referral, you know, something like, you know, our body cams was an example of that, um, and, you know, there are other things that could be stretching out. Um, do do we want to take that into consideration? And maybe just by changing that threshold to eleven, maybe that's how we take it into consideration, but.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I'm pretty confident that the whatever council is, I mean, this is this is definitely not meant to, and I don't think it'll be used to stifle uh public comment. It's really just a procedural ability for us to not kind of waste everybody's time and have comment when when people aren't ready for it. So I I think that the simple majority would take care of that.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Figaro call.
Already, so can I put a motion with an amendment without having it written down? Is that okay? Which will be simple. Okay.
Sure, there's no motion on the table, so yeah, go for it.
So so just to change uh the two-thirds to a simple majority and and you know, just that, just that, recommend the, recommend, um, make that change and then um ask for the vote.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, can I get a second? Alder Hack, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Okay, unless I'm seeing otherwise, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. Uh, Grant, you have a few more minutes. Do you think you can get your other item?
This one's super easy. This is basically the the change that was, we had made earlier to um, basically, if we're going to have a discussion about referrals and a debate about it, it was to take it off of the consent agenda rather than having that discussion debate while we're doing the consent agenda. The language that was used to make that change, um, introduced some confusion or questions around items that are introduced from the floor. Um, and so there was an interpretation that we had to also force those off the consent agenda, um, which was, which was not the intent, um, at least my intent when I authored that previous. So this is really just a language revision that clarifies that. Um, and it also clarifies that if uh the sponsor of any um legislation wants to change the referrals that they're they're proposing, and they do that, um, you know, ahead of the meeting, that that also can stay on the consent agenda. Obviously, any alder can can always pull it off the consent agenda and still. Obviously, any Alder can, can always pull it off the consent agenda and still talk about it. But the goal here is to let anything stay on the consent agenda that everybody agrees with and only pull things off where there's actually debate and discussion. So this is just really a, mostly a, a language clarifications to that effect.
Any questions, discussion, motion? Alder Heck, go ahead.
I'll move approval.
Can I get a second? Second from Alder Figaro Cole. Any discussion? Unless I'm seeing otherwise, I'm going to assume anonymous consent, approval by unanimous consent. Okay, thank you. And so we actually got through our agenda. Karen, go ahead.
Sorry, who moved?
I believe it was Alder Heck.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? As long as there's no objection, that was going to be unanimous consent and I will see everybody in a half hour. Thank you, everybody.